Hey guys, Ninja Boy here and welcome back to another episode of Pokemon Violet. In the last episode we, well, we did some exploring on the post-game and got few upgrades like, got um Mirage upgrade, then an item printer upgrade, your master class, and lots more alright, it's kind of fun. And now, in today's episode we'll be checking out Briar. Let's see what she has to give us. Okay. Hey Ninja Boy, glad to see you. You feel rested and recovered after our big adventure down in the Under-Death? Uh yeah. No, you really is an im- an enviable thing. I'm still feeling all rung up despite having been back for a while now. But on to why I call you here. Since our return, I've been writing of everything we discovered on our expedition. Honestly, I have hardly slept. I obtained Gita's permission to turn it all into a book. But don't worry, I'll make sure to skip a few details and omit the names of those involved. Wow, so voila, a proof of copy of the book, freshly delivered from my publisher just for you. Briar's book, okay. I behaved recklessly in the Under-Death. I don't know what we would have done if it weren't for you. You truly deserve a copy of this book. I hope this, it's sufficient as an apology. Ah, but there was something else I need you check on with you. Would you mind showing me your Terror Orb? Hmm, as I thought, it's behaving just like our Herons and Carmine's orb. I think it might be because your orbs were directly exposed to the energy from Terrapagos. Con- Heron and Carmine said that ever since the Under-Death, they've been able to terrestralize their Pokemon without charging their Terror Orb. Wait, what? Actually, there's one more piece of information hmm I should share with you related with to those deepest Under-Death. You know the terrarium core that hangs from the ceiling of the terrarium? Well, until now, I've been keeping it topped up with mixture of Paldea soil and water from the crystal pool in Kitakami. Okay. That's how we have been able to stabilize the phenomenon on our school grounds. But the other day, I tried adding crystals I collected from the Under-Death to that mix and it caused the properties of the core to change. The result? Pokemon shining in rainbow colors. Over the- And they have the Stellar Type. Thanks to this, my research into special phenomenon is shining brighter than ever. Stellar type Earth light. But only after use of- no other move of the same type will get boosted. In raid battles, all moves will be boosted without a limit. Oh, and there's one more thing. A man in black blue suit was looking for you uh for you over by the entrance of the academy. That's all I have to report. Thanks for stepping aside, uh setting aside some time to chat. I'll pay a visit to my publisher. Okay, I'll take good care of Terrapagos. Well, that's interesting. Hmm. Without the need of terrestralizing, I mean, we can terrestralize without charging. Same. They say something will happen if I go to Kitakami in the crystal pool, but- Something really is happening. Terrapagos. Whoa. I wonder what's- is this? That's Professor Churo, isn't it? Hey. Well now, this is a curious development. Have I somehow broken through the boundaries of space and time? And who are you? Professor? Have we met? If so, I'm sorry, but I don't seem to recall it. I'm Professor Churo. I researched Pokemon in Area Zero and yet- Oh, Miraidon, what? This Pokemon. Is this the Iron Serpent? Oh lol. You're calling it an Iron Serpent? Damn. It's called Miraidon, man. Is that right? So its name is Miraidon? Hmm, that's a good name. Hmm. From the clues you have already let slip, I suppose I would have to conclude. From my perspective, this must be a future. Though of course, the complexities of space and time are beyond count. It's possible that our encounter might not even be occurring in a timeline connected to my own. Perhaps, this meeting is nothing more than a fleeting miracle. Why don't we exchange as much useful data as we can? In what little time that fate has gifted us. Wait, what? Oh, this is crazy. Is there anything you'd like to ask me? Well, what about your family? Oh, you even wish to know about my private life? I do have a family, a son. He is probably at home. Well no, I suppose right now could be in spirit. Where- whenever and wherever he is, I imagine he must be quite lonely. Is there anything else you'd like to ask me? What are you studying now? I'm researching methods to catch Pokemon that live in different timelines. So I might transport them to the present day in my own timeline. That sounds fantastical, fantastical, no doubt. But I'm drafting plans now for the time machine, for the machine that may achieve it. You see, this book captured my imagination when I read it as a child and has never let go. But progress has been slow and beset by failures. I haven't left my lab in quite some time now. I desperately hope that I might learn some new insight from this exploration, so I can finally make some progress and return home. Is there anything else? Why are you here? I don't precisely know the cause. I was analyzing some recent data in my secret lab one moment. And the next thing, uh and the next, I was standing here before you. Perhaps this is the influence of the crystal Pokemon that lies dormant in the space. Or perhaps, the cause lies with you and I. Now, let us create places in this exchange. I'd say this time, the time has come for my own question. Wait, what do you mean? What is this place? It doesn't appear to be anywhere in Paldea. Well, this here is a crystal pool in Kitakami. So we are in Kitakami's crystal pool eh? I remember reading about its text. It's said to be a place where water wells up from the ground imbued with terrestrial energy. It would seem that I have been shifted quite far in both space and time. My next question then. That Pokemon have Iron Serpent? I mean Miraidon, tell me more about it. Well. You can write it all over the places. Hmm, my initial thought was that it strikes- it bears a striking resemblance to Cyclazor, wouldn't you agree? Perhaps some future form of Cyclazor? If so, it does lend uh lend a hand of strength on my habit to this. Hmm, that book. You have there, I don't recognize its cover. What is it? The hidden treasure of Area Zero? What would- would you let me see it for a moment? Description of the Area Zero under the- Under Death? The records of Terrapagos awakening? Who is this writer to have written such a work? Well, she's a descendant of he- Now is- now isn't that something? A very- a descendant of the author of the original Violet book? Exploration runs in the family, I see. At any rate, that is a book that would ignite the imagination of any true scientist. I'm sorry, but I simply must have the mo- I simply must have the time to read the book the- and this book more thoroughly. Oh no. What's going on? Oh, the mist is closing once again. I assume that means our time is near us and- Aw. I wish I could spend a little longer getting to know the Iron Serpent, but I must hurry. That book, I imagine it must be quite valuable. It wouldn't feel right for me to claim it without offering you a compor- uh exchange then. Though I hate to part something so precious to me, would you consider trading hmm that book for a copy of Violet book? Yeah, sure. Okay. About Violet book. I appreciate this more than you can imagine. Perhaps, I should take this chance to go back home and enjoy a bit of downtime with a good book. This is where we part, fellow adventurers and Iron Serpent. How lucky we were to meet across time space. Hi, video adios. So he's going away now huh? See. I wonder what's gonna happen now? Wait, what? What the? The hell? The game isn't title string? I have no idea what's going on. What? I'm back in my room? Uh, I'm confused. Wait a minute. Is that the hidden ending? That's it? Wow, uh what do I do now? Entrance hall? What? Wait a minute, am I in? Mnemona? Oh my goodness, I'm back in- I'm back in Uwa. Well now, that's pretty interesting. I guess I'll talk to the Team Starb- Wait no no no. I have taken all the passes, right? Yeah, I have. Where are they? What? The- Wait a minute. Yo Ninja Boy. What? Not every day we get to see him around the academy, huh? For sure, we're not in the same grade as Ninja Boys. Either so it's lucky we bumped into him. Yeah, you're doing alright pal? Not sure what to make of that dumbfounded look you're going there. Uh who might you be? Well, alright, and for God, we are not wearing our usual outfits today. Man, now that you mention it, I guess this is the fourth time he's seen us looking all proper in our school uniforms. Sheesh. Now I feel all awkward about it. But hey, let's clear things up. It's me, Giacomo. Giacomo, what? Our DJ voice, you- when you catch me at the decks. Ari here? But I'm sure that was obvious. That wasn't obvious, Ari, come on. We came in today to take some makeup tests. Figured it was about time we started falling back all that learning we messed up while we were old up in our boy- bases. Our Team Star outfits aren't all that practically practical for test and things. So we have to- we- we came in school uniforms today. Hey Ari, you think Ninja Boy could help us out with the ongoing snitch? What do you mean? Oh, hey, that's right, great idea, Giacomo. Great. Uh can I help you with something? Well, we've got a little proposal for you. How do you like to be our teacher? A tutor? She is one step at a time, maybe we should start by explaining what's going on? Oops, right you are, Ari. Ah okay. Basically, the other Team Star bosses are having a rough ass time out there. You remember Meli, Ortie and Atticus, right? Those three, yup, they have been taking makeup tests like us, but they sure ain't passing them. Let's see. They might actually have to repeat the year, which would suck after all that poor they put in coming back to school. Before you ask, me and Ari have already tried tutoring them ourselves and it didn't go well at all. Nope, you know, I seriously didn't think those three would have had a hard time. I mean, for me, it feels like all you need to do is pass tests, learn formulas and memorize stuff. Hmm guess I just can't wrap my head around when it- when it is they can't wrap their heads around. And I'm the only one good at- I'm only good at teaching people if it to do with sports or exercises. We heard from Penny that your grades are pretty decent. I bet even Ortiga and the others would fork their ears up if you dropped them bu- to teach them. Yeah, sure, I'd be happy to help. Ah, thank you so much Ninja Boy, you really are the best. Hey, no problem, man. Whoops, almost forgot, we gotta keep this under wraps, okay? No telling Penny. We have trust- uh we have stressed her out enough for one- one lifetime. There's no way we can bother with her with this. This- Right here. So- So come let us know when you are ready to start. Ready to start, what do you mean? Well, this is quite- thank. Wait, what exactly do I have to do here? Wow, they really look different. Huh? I suppose. Sup gang, studying hard I hope? Well, we were here before you and your big mouth showed up. Here to check up, you're not slacking off, are you? Pretty much, your eyes start gazing- glazing over the second I'm out of store. Tell me if I'm wrong. Ah Lady Ari, glad you know who's cool, uni- academy uniform? I feel my eyes- my eyes sharpen and my mind focus each time this vision returns to greet me. If only that focus were helpful for your studies. Atticus, sorry, I keep distracting you. Oh, what's this? My ninja senses detect the presence of a nardo behind the Lady Ari. Come, step forward, name that we might see the face. Hey there. You? What the? No, 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 why is this happening? Ah, I should have summarized as most, the strength of diet pre- precede the ever, good fellow. Well, never mind that, Giacomo, explain what's Ninja Boy doing here? Uh hey now, be nice, Ninja Boy, no. Professor Ninja Boy is gonna be your tutor. Oh, glad tidings, I'm super grateful to hear. He's gonna be what? Since when? You- you can't just be- go stomping around saying stuff like this without asking anyone, Giacomo. And you? We don't need a tutor, do us a favor and tour the home, would you? Hey, Ortie. Uh. Ninja Boy kindly agreed to come here and help us out. So talking to him with the- with that kind of attitude. It's unacceptable, right? Uh yeah, no, totally, I'm sorry. Sorry who? Whoa, she snapped. Uh um what I meant was sorry Ninja Boy. Oh, very menacing mood, what a vision of an unusual rarity. Well, hey, don't worry about Ortiga. He just doesn't want to- want you to- want you to see him floundering. Hey guys, we seem to have lost Meli, where did she go? Lady Mela declared her wish to stretch her legs minutes before your arrival. To depart her- uh- Beyond. She- Does- Thing. She wandered off? Because she didn't feel like turning. I hate to say it, but I guess that's probably true. Uh sorry about this Ninja Boy, could you find Mela for us? She will be near the ac- somewhere in the academy for sure. Okay. Sorry to keep relying on you so much like this, I hope you find Meli without much of hope. Okay, I guess we are gonna find Meli. Oh hey, Meli's right there. I wonder what she is doing. Meli, hello Meli. Is that really Meli? Are you kidding me, go down? Okay. Whoa. Oh, hey Ninja Boy. Meli, is that you? Seriously, you're- you have eyes, don't you? Obviously it's Meli you're talking to. Aw man. Well, alright, I guess I'm not decked out in your usual gear today. Damn. Well, Ari made a big fuss about wearing our uniforms for the study group thing. So yeah, it's not like I had much of a choice. So what are you doing here anyway? Well, I've been looking for you. So, what an equation. You reaching for an art showdown or something? No, I'm here to teach you. Oh, okay, you came up here to bring me back to classroom, huh? Guess time goes away from me while I was admiring the veggies. Might as well get going then. Well, sup amigos. Well, welcome back, Meli, Mela. And Ninja Boy, thanks- thank you so much for finding her. So, where are you lazing around this time? Ah, you know, here and there. Lady Mela, is something amiss? Nah, we are all good, right? The dream study teams all here. That's what counts. Time's wasting, so I say let's hit the book. Take it away, Professor Ninja Boy. These three are counting on ya. Uh, how am I supposed to know this? I don't get it. See how it's going? Don't think I need- I didn't see you and your smug face overing here there. You've got some nerve. You realize I'm a second-year student, right? I am literally entirely your above you. Huh, Ari says we need to, uh, we need to let you help, so fine. But I'll be shocked if you get this little stuff to thinking. Man, how am I supposed to know how some made-up characters in the story are feeling? See, the protagonist in the story is the mom in the Marshall family. Her name's Mama Marshall. We are supposed to analyze why she calls Papa Marshall terrible in this passage. What? I need to help her with literature? Aw, man. Hmm. Uh-oh. Oh my goodness. Mama Marshall's eyes glittering with tears. It was clear from the letter Papa Marshall has left. She would never get to see him again. Trying with feelings to the end, you're a terrible thing. Hmm. Aw, man, I don't know. What are the answers? Uh... Let me just- give me a while. Well, okay. The answer is a fun. Huh. So she calls him terrible, but she actually loves him. Why doesn't she just say that then? There's no way that's the right answer? You sure about that, my man? I have- I'd have thought of you of all people would relate. What's that supposed to mean? Only that you do exactly the same thing with Ninja Boy. You're always snapping at him and being difficult. But you actually respect him a ton, don't ya? What? You must be joking. There's no way in the universe I would respect this fool even a little. Huh, nah, uh, no way, no. Fine, I guess people are tempted to say the opposite of what they mean sometimes. Hmm, this question makes more sense to me now, but just a little bit. Okay. Let's check up on Atticus. What I know is that I'm not. I have found them of the death of mine on ignorance. Hmm, yeah, sure, I'll help you. My deepest thanks. Okay. Wow. Well, then I shall not waste a moment. The ninja arts are where my focus should lie. That's right. Wow, splendid. Haha, but Lady Ari, Ninja Boy, how already approved my... Arts? Hey Ninja Boy, I don't need to criticize, but could you try not to increase these three to neglect the studies? Oh, okay. Wait, let me try that again. I think I messed up. Don't tell me I messed up. Okay, I have to reset. Okay, let's try this again. Well, okay. My deepest thanks. Okay. No, you- you will need numbers, come on. That's the answer, okay? Hmm, skills math- skill in mathematics will be of service to me, you say? Hmm. I know it's with- it's like with our sta- Team Star uniform, remember? We ended up spending a lot of money on them. As indeed we should. One much not shy from the expense from creating objects of great quality. But we had remnants of fabric left over after the aftertreatment. Don't you think we could have saved more money there? I- I cannot deny that. This is a fair point. Now that I think of it, the garments dimension and the cost of materials demand calculation. That's right. From now on, I'll devote myself to studying all mathematics here. Oh. Sorry to kinda butter you in your tutoring, you know? I'm glad it all worked out though. Uh, okay. Man, this is hard. Hmm, what are you looking at? You're a tutor, aren't ya? You can get Pokemon, get new move, new Pokemon only by catching them yourself or trading with others. Well, uh, that's true, right? Uh, no. Get a new Pokemon only by catching them yourself? False? That's false. Right, that's what I thought. Can't go forgetting about Pokemon you hatch from eggs. Ah, you're kidding me, right? Okay, next one. What is the name of the gemstone that bloomed? That's the Terror Jewel, right? Yeah, that sounds about right. Guess it makes sense, you know, all about all this saying if you have your own terror orb. Either way, turtleizing is pretty awesome, don't you think? Only outstanding students get to have a terror orb for themselves, although... Okay, next one. I don't know how to put it. It's a tricky one. You promise not to laugh? How important do you think dreams are? Hmm. Dreams are like our future goals. Exactly, I'm talking about the future. What we wanna be when we are older, that kind of stuff. I've got no idea about all that, I don't know. Meanwhile, most of Team Star's team like they figure they've got it figured out. They've got their upper dreams. Even the veggers in the schoolyard are doing their best to grow, you know? Yeah. I mean, what will happen if I never figure it out? Hmm. Well, you'll find a dream someday, right? You have- you have your art, don't you? Huh? How do you know that I joined the art club? Well, um... That's a secret. Well, whatever. That's just an hobby anyway. Not like I'm gonna do art, do art to earn a living. Wait, now that I think about it, Mr. Dragon Bros does this art for his job. He always looks like he's having a great time at school. It's not like he's wor- not working at all. If I could do something like that, if I could paint for a living, that'd be pretty fun. You thinking that could be it? Yeah, for sure. Of course. You're right, that's gotta be it. That's my dream. Man, I feel like a whole new person. Thanks, Ninja Boy. No problem, anytime, man. Alright gang, about time. Yeah, totally. I sped up to my practice questions like a champ. Okay. Uh, I feel like someone's deep thought on me, man. Aw, that's a nice line. Uh, that's brilliant, everyone. Well done. I get a golden bottle cap, nice. And I got some Team Star uniform, wow. Let's do it. I learned the Hostile Abyss time mode. That's great. What? Guys, what are you all doing? Penny? Sheesh, busted. I was just walking down the hall and you all were here. But that's fine, no one asked me to join. Uh, so I should be fine, shouldn't I? Sorry about that. See you later. Lady Penny, wait. It's not what you think, Penny. Hear us out. So what happened was... Ew, I thought you were all decided not to talk to me anymore. Oh, come on, how- why would we exclude you? We would never. That's what it mu- uh, must have looked like though. Sorry, we made you worry. We just didn't want to drag you into another one of those messes. Our bad, Penny. Well, apology not accepted. Wait for real? Why do you guys get to decide that I'd be weighed down by your problems? I'm your friend, right? So you should come bother me more. Lean on me, that's what actually makes me happy. Oh, Lady Penny. And if things get really bad, I'll just hack into the school system and pick up your grades anyway. What? That's a terrible idea. Yeah. It- it- isn't that taking a bit too far? Sorry, that was a joke. I was trying to lighten things up here, but I guess that was pretty out of character. Glad to hear it. If you're serious, I would have had to pummel some sense into ya. Uh, abo- but about before, I'm actually a pretty good tutor, you know? So feel free to ask me for help with studying and stuff anytime. Lady Penny, we are honored by your generosity. Sheesh. Does that mean we gotta be lectured by Ninja Boy and Penny now? No, I guess there are worse things. Huh, careful, my man. There- that was danger close to straight a compliment. You can't come outright and say you like the idea. Indeed. I need not even use my ninja senses so childishly apparent our die-through feelings. What as if you know what's in my head, you guys haven't got a clue about me. Trying to get to know me better before spouting nonsense? You're all the worst. Aw, look who's blustering. Hey guys, I- I think we broke Ortiga. That was fun. Wait, let me check out the emote. Okay, I think that's it, right? That's all the side quest on Team Star. It seems so. Very tidy. Wait, uh, should I just try going there? Let's see. Hey! That's it? That's all you're gonna see me? Oh, whatever. Okay, let's check out the new Hostile Abyss star. Okay, let's change our uniform and... Change up, you know? Modify uniform me. Interesting. Team Star heels. Team Star glove. Team Star helmet. Team Star sunglasses. Wow! Okay, I'm gonna be ending this episode off right here. And I'll see you guys... In the next video, alright? So, until then... Until then... Hasta la vista! See ya, guys!